People and government. We join hands with our sister corporation, the Broadcasting Corporation of the Bahamas, as the host broadcasters. We are going to get into this press conference, and I have always wanted to introduce this person in public, and I always wanted to do it just like this. Ladies and gentlemen, colleagues, the Prime Minister of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas.
Thank you, Diana. And just let me welcome you here to the press room of the Office of the Prime Minister. I am pleased to welcome my colleagues from the Caribbean, throughout the Caribbean, to the Forty-Fourth Heads of Government Meeting, which will be held at the Bahama Resort in the Bahamas from the fifteenth to the seventeenth of February, two thousand and twenty-three. This gathering of Caribbean leaders will focus on the region's most pressing issues with the objective of promoting increased collaboration and developing meaningful policy solutions. The agenda will feature a discussion of the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and other emerging health issues and the strain being placed on regional health systems. Our discussion of national security and migration issues will include specific consideration of the crisis in Haiti. Climate change and financing will be a central focus. The Bridgetown Initiative and its role in generating funding to assist developing nations as they adapt to climate change will serve as the launchpad for our discussions. We'll also address the need for greater regional food and energy security. CARICOM welcomes the opportunity to engage with the President of Africa Export-Import Bank, the President of the Development Bank of Latin America, the Director General of the World Trade Organization, the Prime Minister of Canada, and the President of the Ukraine, who will deliver a video message. These leaders will provide valuable insights that will support our solution-focused discussions. The government of the Bahamas is proud to play a pivotal role in hosting and organizing this monumental meeting. Through this gathering of minds, we have an opportunity for the region's leaders to unite for the benefit of the entire Caribbean. We look forward to the outcome of these discussions as we work toward a brighter future for the Caribbean, built on a foundation of solidarity and partnership. With me this afternoon, we have the Secretary General of CARICOM, Ms. Carla Barnett. She is the, she keeps us in check and keeps the things running between our countries. And I'd like to welcome her to the Bahamas. Welcome, Carla. So, yeah, say a few words to us, Carla.
Thank you very much, Prime Minister. I'm really very pleased to be here. I will not add anything to the agenda, as has been comprehensively discussed by the Prime Minister already. I will just say to you that all of the arrangements that have been put in place and that are being executed by the team on the ground in the Bahamas, together with the team from CARICOM, are excellent, and we're really looking forward to a good meeting over the next few days in the Bahamas. So I'm here as well to answer any questions along with the Honorable Prime Minister. Thank you.
We will entertain a few questions, first from the local media, and then from our colleagues who are joining us by Zoom. Anyone with questions? Ladon?
Secretary General or the Prime Minister, are you guys able to say if representatives or government officials from Haiti will attend this Forty-Fourth CARICOM session? And if so, will there be any separate or apart private meetings held with those officials to discuss the crisis in Haiti?
You want me to take it?
Yeah, take it.
Okay.
The representatives of Haiti at the official heads meeting would be the representatives of the government, who are supposed to be here. There's an ongoing conversation that CARICOM is having about bringing all of the stakeholders together in Haiti, and I am expecting that that matter will be further discussed among the heads when they meet.
Any other questions from local media?
Are you able to say? Thank you. Are you able to talk about food security? The region is quite vulnerable as a whole. The IDB has said the Bahamas needs to focus on food security this year in 2023. Which countries in the region are most vulnerable? And with Guyana leading the sort of the thrust to secure food security and agriculture, what steps, meaningful steps have already been taken to try and achieve that when it comes to farming, food security, quality food, affordable food, and the rest of it?
Yeah, the process that we're involved in in CARICOM, which is led by the President of Guyana, is in the nature of food and nutrition security. So it's about producing more food and making nutritious food available for everyone. It's a process that involves the ministries of agriculture across the region, and they've been engaged in a planning effort for the last two, two and a half years or so, in which they've been focusing on identifying specific products, specific technologies for improving production, they've identified commodities, and they've been focusing on generating projects that are available, that need financing and mobilizing financing for those products in order to increase the availability of food across the region. It is not only in Guyana, it is across the region, but it is being led by the President of Guyana.
If CARICOM is able to say which countries in the region are most vulnerable?
We are all. We are all. That's one of the things that we learned. We did that study along with the World Food Program last year, which indicated that we are all food insecure, and this came to the forefront at the height of the COVID-19 crisis, when the shipping issues, yes, the disruptions, meant that many of our countries had issues ensuring that there was a constant supply of food. So we are all food insecure.
The region's healthcare systems are vulnerable. Many of the public healthcare systems in COVID obviously highlighted this. How are we going to, is CARICOM going to shore up and ensure that healthcare systems are able to meet the needs of so many of its citizens, many of whom rely heavily on public healthcare systems that are quite lacking?
Well, that is a discussion that the heads are going to be engaged in. We're having CARFA, which is the Regional Public Health Agency of CARICOM. So we're going to be having that conversation led by CARFA. All of our systems are indeed under stress because of the diversion of resources from other kinds of provision of health services to dealing with the COVID crisis since 2019. So there is a conversation that's going to be had. It's a really very important issue, because a lot of the gains that many of us would have made, particularly in vaccinations, because you know that there's been a reduction in vaccinations, partly due to the turning of the attention away from regular vaccinations to the COVID crisis. So there is a huge issue, yes, and it is something that the heads are going to have to be discussing, not only at this meeting, but subsequently as well.
Prime Minister Davis has led a campaign around the world in recent months to do with climate change for the region. Just according to what was said, the bigger countries appear reluctant or stubborn to step in and try and do their part for the damage they have done on vulnerable countries like ours. Where do we stand with that? And are they paying, taking heed and paying attention to your ongoing cries?
If you look at what happened in the discussions at COP in Egypt, you would recognize that we really are in a situation where the most vulnerable countries are paying the price, and the larger countries are really not bearing their part of the burden. That's not a problem that we can solve on our own. What we need to continue to do is to advocate and do our part. But the reality is that the larger emitters in the world need to take charge and do what is right. So some of the terms that you hear us talking about nowadays is about climate justice, because those who are causing the impact are not bearing their burden of dealing with the effects of that. So I don't know if that answers your question, but yeah, it's not something that we can solve. We are the smallest emitters. We don't cause the problem, we just bear the burden.
Secretary General, if I may, one of the big aims of CARICOM is to sort of foster this integration between member states. Is there a mechanism that you can speak to that occurs if and when member states may not be cooperative? And are you pleased with the level of cooperation that CARICOM receives from its member states?
It depends on what you're talking about. I think there is a misperception that CARICOM integration means that we're all doing everything in the same way at the same time, and that's not really what it is. It is about us working together to find solutions to the problems that we share and to use our cooperation as a basis for economic and social growth. And so we do that, and we do that in different kinds of ways. We trade with each other tax-free. We've been doing that for the longest while. We're a customs union, and we are seeking to integrate more closely our financial markets so that investment can move. It's a work in progress, and we take stock of it from time to time, and we're going to be taking stock of it at this meeting as well. But it's not about us doing everything together all at the same time. That's not what we try to do.
What kind of value do you hope that non-CARICOM members, the guests from the U.S. and Canada, and the input from Ukraine, what kind of value do you hope that will add to the conversations and discussions this week?
Well, insofar as the U.S. and Canada concern, for the United, on his part of the United States, they are re-engaging the Caribbean as they have never done before. We have, we developed a program from the Summit of Americas that's called the Twenty-Thirty Objectives, where they are providing technical assistance and assistance in energy, food security, and helping our health systems. And the mechanism for accessing that, those are the details that we're here working out. As also, we're here concerned about the challenges we have in Haiti, because Haiti is a, will be, take a prominent priority in our discussions, to find a solution to that Haiti problem. Likewise, with the Prime Minister from Canada, he is coming here to talk about the role that they may be able to play in assisting us. What we in CARICOM have come to appreciate is that we do not have the resources to be able to deal with the Haiti problem ourselves, and we do need outside help. And that help is, we're looking to the North, Canada, and the United States to come to the fore to help. And it has to be a Haitian, a Haitian solution, not an American, Canadian, or CARICOM solution. We're here to help them find a solution. And so that's the role they're coming, and they are here to engage us in those discussions, to craft some solutions to the problems that we face. We also be talking about the migration issues that impact all of our countries in respect to irregular and sometimes a more likely dangerous migration of persons who are impacted by the challenges within their own jurisdictions. So far as President Zelensky, no doubt he wants to continue to drum up support for the country in their fight in the war that is unnecessary war, we say, that's going on in his country. He's going to update us to what is happening, what is likely to happen, and continue to seek our support for their efforts to stop what is going on in the Ukraine, i.e. bring an end to the war, to enlist whatever role we can play to bring that sad event to an end.
And you mentioned discussing migration with the U.S. and Canada. What about also the movement of guns and drugs through the region?
Well, that's always, that's a high, that's a topic that we are continually discussing with the United States. We continue to remind them that their right to bear arms does not equate to, in our view, the right to trafficking arms, because we find that most of the guns that's been used in our criminal activities in the Bahamas and throughout the region, we can trace them right back to where they're being purchased in the United States, to the very shop. We can identify the persons who, in fact, buy the guns. They have just recently passed a law discussing the issue of straw purchases, meaning that a person does buy the gun to pass on to others, and they think that will be a step towards assisting us in preventing the export of guns and the trafficking of guns to our region. But that's enough, I'm not sure yet, because we've been seeing how it has taken teeth. But yes, that is high on our, on our agenda, and we continue to continually remind them that we don't make guns, and we don't export guns, because we don't make them. And to find them in our countries, it must come from where they're being manufactured, and they have to take responsibility for, for guns being found and being used in criminal activities in our region.
I know that the Haitian government has called for international military support to help stabilize the country. Already said, you know, the solution to the problem has to be a Haitian problem. Does that mean?
A Haitian-led solution.
A Haitian-led solution, my apologies. Just wanted to know, does that mean that the region won't be minded to lend that support in any way?
First of all, you know, they have called for an intervention, right? I think the international community is reluctant to intervene in the, in the sense that we make it an international solution, or it's an occupation by an international, by the international powers. But rather, what we seek to have done is to stabilize the country sufficiently enough to allow for a free and fair elections, and the path and journey to that is where the challenge falls. And so what we need is to be able to ensure that persons who would wish to offer themselves for elected positions in the country, to form a parliament, to form government, persons are able to reach and speak to the citizenry, to sell their program and their initiatives, share their philosophy, and vision for their country, free from intimidation and free from fear of violence, et cetera. And persons who are going to exercise their right to choose will be able to do so without intimidation, likewise, without being, without being forced. And so that is where the challenge lies. So the role of any, I see the role of any international intervention will be just to stabilize the country, to allow those things to take place, to lead to a free and fair action, so the country could be stabilized and could have a government that is the will of the people. And, you know, there's a reluctance, I think, because this will not be the first time. There's been interventions, and there's been interventions, and there've been interventions. So the question is being asked, you intervene again, then what next? And then we recall again to do it. But I don't think the fact that we, that, that we should not be, in my view, reluctant to move to assist in a way to allow that pathway to free and fair actions, because we fear that will not be sustainable. Something, it has to start somewhere, and hopefully this time, if it is Haitian-led, we believe it will sustain itself. If it appears to be imposed upon the Haitian people, it will not be sustainable in I view.
Dr. Barnett, are you able to provide any statistics, I guess, for the region, on how the Haitian crisis has affected the countries? In terms of, you know, how many new repatriations or apprehensions?
I wouldn't have that information at hand at all, but it's really widely reported, and I was reading some significant statistics recently. In all of this, for us, the indication is that the increase in the flow of migrants is a reflection of the increasing instability and the growing criminality. And it's, for me, it would be difficult to solve the issue of migration out if we don't solve the problem of stability and security within. So it's really as the Honorable Prime Minister said, to see if we can assist the Haitian people in finding a solution that will gain them that. Yeah.
Okay. We want to allow our colleagues in the Caribbean and indeed throughout the world to be able to ask questions. Do we have questions from Zoom? I ask that they identify themselves and say which country they're watching from, please.
Hi, yes. Hello?
Hi.
Hi, yes, David Therton from CBC News in Canada. This question is for Prime Minister Davis. Prime Minister Davis, has the Bahamas committed to sending any form of troops, or I think the phrasing that was used was manpower, to Haiti? If so, can you talk a little bit about that, in the sense like, how many people are you intending to send? What sort of security force would this be? Is it from the army? Is it from the police? What sort of training do they have? And also, can you speak to whether or not there are any other CARICOM members or other Caribbean countries that intend to follow your lead?
Well, let me say that it would not be the first time that we, as a country, would have provided assistance by allowing members of our defense force to go into Haiti to provide peacekeeping initiatives. And so in that regard, we are discussing doing the same thing again if we are called upon to do so. And that will be, though, with the assistance and being led by one of the powers that be. As I, as you may have heard, we do not have the capacity, nor do we have the resources to effectively bring stability to Haiti. None of our Caribbean countries, either individually or collectively, could achieve that without assistance. So once we have identified assistance from abroad, we are prepared to do our part to ensure that stability is obtained in Haiti.
Any more questions from Zoom?
Yes. Hello, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Jules Vasquez here from Channel Seven, Jules Vasquez, Channel Seven in Belize. Would, Madam Secretary, Secretary General, would you address the issue of food security? I know it is high on the agenda, and one of the most critical issues within that is the rising cost of fertilizer and the lack of access to affordable inputs. And we know that here in Belize, and you will know this so well, the banana sector, which has for decades been a reliable cornerstone of our export earnings economy, is facing a crisis critically because of change and the cost of fertilizer. Are there any concrete ways in which this can be addressed? We know that inflation is a worldwide crisis and the cost of inputs as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jules. The problem that we face is really deep-rooted. We are a region that, over the years, has become quite dependent on the importation of food, and you are correct, global increases in prices of food continue. The inputs into food production are also increasing, along with all of the prices. So really, what we're talking about is seeing how we can plan to increase our production of food, with the understanding that if we are able to increase our production, our local production, if the food should be, if all of the numbers add up correctly, they should be cheaper, because we're not factoring in the transport costs that would add to the cost of food on our shelves. Now, the strategy that the CARICOM agreed to some years ago is the strategy to reduce food imports, even before the impact of COVID, the strategy to reduce imports by 25% by 2025 was in place. One of the realities that we're facing is that strategy has itself been impacted by COVID, because, as I said, that strategy predated COVID. But we are continuing to press forward in order to increase food production, and it is not only a series of policies, it's a series of projects as well. There continues to be work by the Standing Committee, the group of ministers of agriculture, supported by the ministries of agriculture across the region, to ensure that food is produced, not only the way we used to, but including new technologies that enhance productivity and will allow us to see the benefit. I would expect that there's going to be a healthy discussion. We're going to be updated on that during this meeting, on the work that's been done since we were in Suriname and discussed it in July. So there are projects on the ground, and there is a mobilization of funding for projects, because as you would know, food is not grown by governments, it's grown by farmers in the real world, and therefore, it's an identification of financing for the production that we're talking about as well.
We will take two more calls from Zoom.
Hi, good afternoon. Sherman Abel, St. Kitts, Open Interactive, asking in five. I just want to quickly, I have a follow-up question for the Prime Minister. Before I ask my question, Prime Minister, you spoke about the issue of crime and security, and you've had discussions specifically with the Americans. Can you specifically say when, or if you can put a timeline, when you can see some significant action, when we can see in the Caribbean, yes, crime and security and the issue of guns flowing from the United States will actually come to fruition, based on the discussions that you would have had with the Americans?
Well, I truly can't come to, don't have a timeline on this issue. Our discussions are continuing. What I can say as a result of my intervention or our discussions with the Americans, they have embedded, they have embedded some assistance here in the country for us to identify, to be able to trace weapons, and to, and to assist in the tracking and interceptions of weapons coming into the Bahamas, and that has proven very effective over the last six to eight months. Insofar as a timeline, when we see an end to gun trafficking in the region, that is very difficult to say. All I can say is that we have to continue to work with the Americans, need to work with our law enforcement agencies, and our partners in the region to at least have what I call the proliferation of guns reduced to a level that is, I'll put it this way, to its irreducible minimum. Because I don't know we'll ever be able to rid ourselves of the scourge, but at least we can so compress it that it's negligible, and the impact on our societies likewise negligible.
Last question from Zoom.
Hi, good afternoon. This is Jacqueline Charles with the Miami Herald. I have a couple of questions, but it relates to Haiti and what can reason- and what can reasonably be expected out of this CARICOM meeting, given the fact that the U.S. has asked Canada to take the lead. They haven't publicly said that they will, but we see that the Prime Minister is going to be there at CARICOM. And then for the Secretary General, CARICOM has been talking for a while, even before the assassination of President Joe Nemoise, about giving some sort of assistance to Haiti, but we haven't seen that. And the latest I've heard is that there's been discussions about going to a country outside of Haiti to bring Haitian stakeholders together. But what does it say when CARICOM itself is not feeling safe enough to travel to Haiti? And yet we see a status quo as far as the security situation from the international community?
So is that a question to me, Jacqueline? Well, let me answer by saying this. I don't know that we are afraid to travel to Haiti, right? But the question is, the instability that continues to persist does not make it, make anyone feel safe to be in Haiti. Suffice it to say that we continue to keep a presence in Haiti with our charged affairs. And we had at least eight council offices in Haiti that we had to evacuate about two weeks ago because of the challenges that was posed, not by gang members, but by the HNP. Now things are settling and we are now considering whether we'll send them back. Yes, we have agreed to meet with stakeholders and the actors of Haiti to come to a place where we could have a discussion on the way forward. And for quite a while, we've been having that discussion. We had anticipated to having that meeting in January, but that seemed to have been sidestepped by the fact that there was an accord that's supposedly signed on the 21st of December, the authenticity of it is being questioned, not so much by, it wasn't created and signed, but by the signatures to that document. And so we have that challenge. And the only way we see as a CARICOM, and I also say that, and I repeat, that resources that are required to bring stability to Haiti is not within the remit of CARICOM at all, either singly or, either collectively or individually. Hence, we need the support of other nations. And so we hopefully will have that meeting, have it as quickly as possible with the Haitian actors, as I said, and we will craft and mediate an arrangement that all, or at least there'll be a consensus that people could buy into and they move forward towards stabilizing the country to allow for a campaign towards the election of a government that is freed of fear, violence and concern for personal life and property.
I want to take this opportunity to thank our Prime Minister, as well as the Secretary General to CARICOM for taking time out of their busy schedule and having this news conference with us. I also want to recognize the presence of two ambassadors who are with us this afternoon. Ambassador to the CARICOM, Her Excellency Lesleya Bryce, and His Excellency Wendell Jones. We also have the Permanent Secretary with us, Mr. Questwell Sturrock, who is responsible for logistics at CARICOM. And we have other CARICOM officials. If you'd like to, after the news conference, have a word with Mr. Sturrock about logistics, feel free to do so. I'd also like to take this opportunity now publicly to thank the local media for the cooperation that you will give me over the next few days as we all cover and work together at this CARICOM. You will be hearing from us over the next, say, 24 hours as to exactly what will be going on and all of the events that you will be able to cover. We will have a working media room at Bahama as well as an interview room at Bahama. It should be set up by tomorrow. Feel free to question any of us after the conference. Again, thank you and thank you to those who joined us by Zoom. Thank you.